Well, I clear. Third state. City Public Works meeting on Thursday. We think we scheduled a Wildwood tour on Friday. Missouri Navy ships commending mating on Friday, the Chamber coffee was mentioned earlier. And then I have a presentation at Rotary West at noon on Friday. Commissioner Bushman, are you there with any reports of any meetings you're attending?
Well, Friday, I'm gonna do a phone in for the USS Missouri Commissioning Committee. And Saturday, even though I won't be there if in 2:00 PM Capitol Road time, the Sons of the Union veterans are presenting a Civil War flag from Merrill's Second Missouri Cavalry Regiment. So we're presenting it to the state of Missouri.
We weren't able to hear anybody out in the.
That's it.
It'll be hard for them to hear.
Ryan's coming in there. You texting him?
Yep.
Can you block him or mute him on there? And while you're at it, smooth saying to you.
Um, I don't know how I.
So my technical difficulties, I think this is the first time we've had this up and running for the meeting. Is that correct?
I think so, yes.
The Web X.
It might be Web X was messing with it, but I don't know. Apparently there's audio, but no video right now.
Audio.
Yep.
Click on the box there you go. Is that what you did?
Now this microphone can be muted. We can hear Ryan talking.
Ryan is coming through.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Never mind, we got it then.
Sorry, you're not hearing me?
Okay.
Ryan muted himself.
Okay, we're good to go yet? Or are we waiting on anything?
I think we're good.
We're good to go. Appointments by commission. We have a number of committee appointments to. Complete. And Eastern District Commissioner Housher will make the appointment.
You want to do each one separate or you want me just to throw these together?
Well, preference. Let's, let's do them separately, just in case there's ever a question to.
We'll do the, so the Co County Parks Committee, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Hal Dooley and Shannon Hawk.
I'll second those reappointment motions. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, here. Co County Road and Bridge Advisory Board, I'll make a motion to reappoint Ruth Dawson and Jason Otkey.
I'll second those motions. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, for the Co County Traffic and Safety Advisory Board, I'll make a motion to reappoint Don Newman and Morgan Patterson.
Second, those, that motion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And then I'll make a motion to appoint Emily Altman to the Co County Residential Special Services Board.
That's the second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Any commission comments before we go under new business? If not, we will go under new business. And the first item is the delivery of the auditors' proposed budget for 2026. Auditor, you have the floor.
Uh, commissioners, as required by state statute, I, the county auditor, am presenting my recommendations for the 2026 budget. I'll point out some highlights this morning, and we have budget hearings scheduled for December 2nd and 3rd with each elected official and department head, and there'll be further discussion at that point in time. If you refer to Table 1, which is Roman numeral 5 in the budget book, and it's on the screen as well. Total revenues projected for 2026 are $64 million compared to last year of $66 million, which is a $2 million decrease or 3%. Sales tax are projected just under $23 million, and they're based off the October 1, '24 to September 30, '25 actuals. And we're assuming they're flat for 2026. This is actually about a $460,000 decrease from the '25 budget. Property taxes are projected just under $7 million, and this is an increase of about $520,000 there. Use tax are projected at $4 million, and that's up from 3.7 million or 8.1% from last year. The ARPA funds, we have budgeted in there around $943,000. All of those dollars need to be spent this year. Just as a reminder, those original funds coming through in 2022 were almost $15 million, 14.9. Our total expenses for '26 are projected at $93.8 million compared to $99.5 million from last year. So a decrease of about 5.7 million or 5.7%. But a couple of things to note. Capital outlays, the decrease accounts for $2.7 million. And the grant expenditures due to grant funding decreasing, that's about $3.5 million. Our personal services projected to increase at $1.4 million or about 4.4%. Then if you look at the bottom, there's a total, a total financial use of $126 million. This reflects all the money, all the cash that the county has to spend, uh, which we would not spend this full amount unless there was, you know, a huge catastrophe or something. But this is down, uh, 6.8 million or 5.1% from last year. On Table 2, which is Roman numeral 8, it breaks out that information into the general fund, road and bridge, capital improvements, the law enforcement, EMS enterprise, our health insurance, and then the 20 other funds. If we go to Table 6, which is Roman numeral, um, 8, excuse me, Roman numeral 13 in the budget book. This table presents the beginning year reserves or beginning year cash balance. Um, I've, I've modified this table slightly. I show the operating revenues and operating expense, and then it shows a net, uh, operating revenue and expenditures. It shows capital outlays. We have a few sales, uh, general fixed assets, and our transfers ins and outs, and shows the ending year reserve. So general fund, we start off with a beginning balance of about $31.1 million. We generate $1.1 million of net revenues. Um, we have payouts of $14 million in capital outlays, and that's the new juvenile detention center. And we have net transfers out of .8 million, leaving us a reserve of about $17.4 million. So our reserves are starting out the year at $31.1 and dropping to $17.4. When you see the reserve to revenues, that's the total operating revenues plus the transfers, um, and the reserve divided by that amount. So for general fund, it's about 88%, which is very good. The other line that says reserve coverage months, that is your reserve divided by your total operating expenditures plus the transfers out. So from the general fund, we have approximately 11 months of reserves on hand. Road and bridge, um, we start off about $2.8 million. Um, basically, there's a little loss from an operating point of view, capital outlays of $917,133 from some fixed assets and transfers out. So they were projected to end the year at $1.6 million or 21% reserve from revenues and two and a half months worth of, uh, operating coverage there. The capital sales improvement tax, um, again, this is the final year of the current five-year phase. So you would anticipate that that balance getting closer to zero. It goes from basically 10.5 million, uh, down to a reserve of 2.3 million. The law enforcement sales tax, uh, we start out at 3.3. Um, there's an operating loss going forward, capital outlays, transfer in of about 1.8, leaving a year in balance of around $314,000. Uh, this is the fund that I'm concerned with the most. Our operating reserves is about 2.8% or less than a month of expenditures there. So this is gonna be a challenge for the sheriff, uh, to, to monitor those expenditures going forward. EMS is an enterprise fund, so basically, um, you kind of hope that, uh, that just zeros out and we're able to transfer money from the EMS sales tax to cover differences there if need be. The health insurance, um, we're hoping that the revenues in matches the revenues out, and we hope by the end of next year, we have around $1.6 million left there. I'll talk about that in a little more detail as we go through. So in total, for all of our funds, we start with a, a cash reserve, beginning cash balance of about, uh, $56.8 million. We have 4.4 million of net, net operating, capital outlays, $34 million. Um, 243 from sale of assets. The transfers ins and outs match each other, leaving us with a cash balance projected at the end of the year about $27.4 million, 39% and five months of coverage there. If we go to the next pages, it's page 93. These are the capital outlays for Public Works. Uh, they're asking for capital improvements of $917,000, uh, out of their fund with $616,000 being equipment. On page 102 is the capital outlays for law enforcement. Totals $418,000, $150,000 on vehicles, and carry forward of about $205,000 there. On the next items on page 117, and that's capital improvements for EMS. Two ambulances, approximately $679,000. Station remodel for South Ridge, $500,000. These are items that, uh, that we may need to, uh, change going forward during our budget hearings. And we've got carryovers of $55,000 and $670,000. So a total of capital outlays of $1.3 million out of EMS. The next page is page 125. This is the capital improvement request from the sales tax, the 15% of the capital improvement sales tax. Again, there's some items that we really don't know how we would address going forward. Electrical system replacement of the courthouse, um, the actual old jail replacement. Um, so the requests are about $43.7 million. We have available about $5.4 million, so I have some recommendations. Again, these are all open for discussion and request, uh, to change going forward. There is $200 million built in for the HVAC for the, the jail. Uh, we still need to finalize that number if we're talking 1.2 or if we're talking 2.6 million there. Um, the next thing to bring up is on page 19 of the budget book. And this reflects the full-time equivalencies of county employees. So in 2016, the county full-time equivalent employees was 310. In 2025, it's 380. Um, that's a 70-employee increase or about 23%. Um, that's something that we need to be aware of and just realize that county government has grown. Again, most of those additions have come in public safety. 19 for the sheriff's office, four for the juvenile center, and four for the prosecuting attorney's office, 27 for, uh, emergency medical services, and six for judicial support staff with the addition of two, uh, circuit judges during that time. The 2026 projected salaries includes the nurse practitioner salary of approximately $110,000. My understanding in the past that this position was added with the assumption that would generate enough revenue to, to more or less offset the cost to date. That has not happened. Um, so that's something that commissioners will need to decide if, if that position is, uh, kept in the health department going forward. I've also added, um, about $10,500 to the building maintenance budget for part-time janitorial service. And from my point of view, uh, this is to be used, uh, maybe for, again, someone part-time, early morning, late evening for some of the janitorial services, uh, that we've discussed, uh, over the last month or so. Salary adjustment, I'm proposing a 2% cost of living adjustment. No merit increases have been included unless they were career ladder steps. Um, I, my recommendation is holding off on those type of increases until the salary study is received and we determine what the cost for a salary study is. Uh, we've had some concerns raised to me and publicly that a 2% cost of living is not enough. Inflation, CPI is running around 3%. Social Security recipients are, uh, gonna get a, an increase of 2.8%. But given that our revenues are getting tighter, we have a pending salary study. Uh, our fringe benefits, the health insurance has gone up quite a bit. Uh, I think in our fund balances are dropping. That's what I think the, the county can afford at this point in time. And again, when the salary study comes in, uh, we can make other considerations at that point in time. There's also been a lot of discussion recently on our health insurance. So the budget is reckon, budget recommendations are based on what were recently approved by the commission. This includes a 20% increase for the direct cost to the funds, um, of the salaries paid for each employee. The employee for the first time in 2025 had to pay $20 a month. That approved amount has been increased to $50 a month going forward. The county will continue to cover 50% of the dependent's health insurance. Uh, it was also approved to move the fund balance of the marijuana sales tax over to help shore up the self-insurance fund that will be approximately $583,000. Um, I personally completed the analysis of the cost to the employees. I looked at the premiums that they're paying and the deductibles. And again, every insurance policy is very complex. Um, the policy maybe have certain components that are a great benefit to one employee and worthless to the other. But from my point of view, for a quick analysis, I looked at the premiums held out of their paycheck and the deductibles, the max deductibles they would pay. For the county PPO's plan, our plan is less expensive to the employee for both the state and the city for the employee-only option. So again, our plan proposal is less expensive to the employee than the state plan and the city plan for PPO. When you look at PPO for our plan versus the city, for every level, we are still less expensive to the employee. So that's regardless of what dependent level. Now, when you look at the state, we cannot compete with state on dependent coverage. They insure so many more people, thousands compared to our hundreds that we have. So that cost is a difference around $1,800 to $5,300 more a year. The private sector, the trend is going to cover employee only and offer insurance for dependents, but at 100% of the cost to the employee. We have not gone that far, um, and, and we'll see where we have to go. 81% of our county employees are under the PPO plan. 68% are employee only, 4% for employee spouse, 23% for employee and children, and 5% for employee and family. So overwhelmingly, the majority of county employees, it's gonna be health insurance is less expensive for our employees than for the, the state or for the city. Our health insurance fund is gonna be critical in the next nine to 12 months as to whether we can continue forward being self-insured. Our rates will go up if, if we have to fall back to totally an independent plan without being self-insured. I also looked for those dedicated fund managers from their point of view. The county's cost of health insurance, only for the employee only, the PPO, our cost to the fund is $9,696 per year versus the average cost for the state is $10,146. So it's a difference of $450 or about 4.4%. So as a direct cost, what we are charging the fund is still cheaper than what the state is doing. And I understand from a fund manager point of view, that 20% increase is significant. So my 2026 budget recommendation's not perfect. I anticipate that the commissioners will want to make changes as we go through the budget hearings process with the elected officials and department heads. The commission will always have the option to make appropriate changes to the 2026 budget throughout the 26-year if needed. I don't mean to come across as a Donald Downer. Um, but from the commissioner's point of view and from every county employee's point of view, we have to realize that our revenues are getting tighter and our expenses are going up and our fund balances are decreasing. So as the budget officer, I want to acknowledge the cooperation and assistance given by the other elected officials and department heads. I also want to wish Mark Ruther a happy retirement and a big thanks to Mark, to Rob Mock, and Liz Trivio of my staff for all the assistance. And I look forward to, uh, working with the commissioner to finalize the budget. If you've got questions, I'll try to answer them. And at some point in time, the only action I think we need to take today is just to accept or receive the budget recommendation into the record.
Great presentation, Jay. Uh, I would ask for one thing to be expanded on. When you use the term self-insured, it's a, that sounds, oh my, that sounds risky. But we protect ourselves on the hunt from being totally uninsured.
Correct. We have, yes, we have the $85,000 per, uh, employee stop loss. Um, some discussions of going to $100,000. Um, based our quick review, I don't think that was financially beneficial. Just one thing to kind of think of. Any type of surgery you have, in my opinion, you're basically gonna hit $85,000. So we are protected from the catastrophic events. Um, but that is getting more expensive as we have more employees hit that stopgap loss.
Questions, great, good information, Jay, thank you.
I'd accept a, Sam, I'm sorry, uh, Presiding Commissioner Bushman, or you have a comment before we, uh, consider a vote to accept the, uh, presentation by the county auditor?
I think Jay's done a good job. I, I have the budget in front of me, so I had picked that up. So I've been following along page by page, so, uh, I think we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, but I, I wanna thank, uh, our new auditor for preparing this.
Okay, I'll make a motion to receive and accept the auditor's proposed budget for 2026.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay. Accounts payable review?
I'm asked for approval for our accounts payable pending review.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable upon review.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Second and final reading of budget adjustment number eight.
This is the second and final reading for budget adjustment number eight in the amount of $108,360 for the law enforcement fund.
I'll make a motion to approve budget adjustment number eight for $108,360 for the law enforcement fund.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Second and final reading of budget adjustment number nine.
This is second and final reading for budget adjustment number nine for $50,000 for the law enforcement fund.
Okay, good. Make a motion to approve the court order for budget adjustment number nine, $50,000 for the law enforcement fund.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Approval and signing of change order number one, Lakewood subdivision star water improves.
So this is the change order for the final closeout documents for Lakewood subdivision, uh, the contractors, VWH Landscaping. Uh, the primary reason was an additional amount of pipe, ditch liner, and concrete pavement. And the primary reason for less work was there was a calculation error on all the pipe for the project. There were seven contingent items added to the project. In total, this is an overrun of $8,709.28. The original budget amount, or the original amount was, Total cost will be $625,936.96. And we did have originally budgeted $750,000 for this project, since you asked, yeah.
I was a little today, thinking about the budget, it's, I'm the engineer.
This project was funded by the Harper Fund, so.
Still, budgeted amount, so, very good. So, good. I'll make a motion to approve the, what do we need, just the change order amount or the final closeout as well? Uh, you're either just a change order amount. But you're just taking over a pound. Motion to approve change order number one in amounts of eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of care leave committee recommendations. Presentation by the chair of the care leave committee, the honorable.
Still going to get a tax bill. The care leave committee met last week and have recommended a thirty days care leave coverage for county employee with another meeting scheduled for a couple of weeks to review to see if he qualifies for an additional thirty days. And we're asking the commission's approval of the first thirty days coverage.
Mary, just for the benefit of someone who hadn't heard the term before, care leave, could you just give a little nugget of information on it and maybe what's in the inventory or the bank of days or hours or whatever? And do you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers. It's pretty significant, though. Care leave is actually due to the generosity of county employees donating some of their vacation time or comp time to a program that allows for if a county employee is off work for more than a length of time that they have in sick leave or vacation time to make sure that their pay continues for, can be a total of up to sixty days. That, right, sixty days? Up to sixty days. So again, we've been very fortunate that the county employees have generously donated to that program to allow us to continue it. You know, I'm not sure when it started, but I think I've been chairman for eighteen years. So it's been a very beneficial program.
Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the care leave committee recommendation.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ovi.
I think that concludes the new business for this meeting under unfinished business approval of twenty-two six holidays. Jessica, would you like to talk about the survey?
Yes. Last week, I sent out a survey after the commission meeting. A hundred and forty employees responded with the survey and option one came out ahead, which was just leave it the same. Option two, which was, I believe, leaving Truman and getting eight floating holidays was nine percent. And option three was leaving Columbus and getting eight floating holidays was two percent. And then option four was receiving the sixteen floating holidays, and that was at twenty-three percent.
Sixteen hours?
Yeah. What did I say? Sixteen hours.
Sixteen days, sixteen days. Responded. Yes.
So option one was ahead with sixty-four percent, and that was just leaving the calendar the same.
Overwhelming majority said that. So lots.
How we get with it?
We deduct that by a function or.
It's a court order, so I think we gotta, I'll make a motion to approve the court order for the two thousand and twenty-six holidays as presented.
Second, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. So we know what we're going to do for twenty-six. Also, under unfinished business, is a discussion of the two thousand and twenty-five Christmas holiday. I'm all for a Christmas holiday on the two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay. Yeah, December twenty-fifth, I'm going to call my Christmas holiday.
But I think what was meant by that is what about the next day, which is a Friday, correct?
Yeah. It happens to fall that way this year. I'll start out being a bad guy. I'm kind of, I got annual leave. You want to take the day off? I feel like taking off, it does cause a lot of headaches for the county with emergency services and stuff, so I'll be the bad guy first. I'll let, up to you, Sam now. I don't know if Sam has to be the tiebreaker. I don't, you want to let Sam go first?
You're the first maul-hung bug. And I'll just be the Grinch that stole Christmas house, because I do think that, I understand people want off that day, but at the same time, we have generous number of holidays. We are somewhat generous on our accrued vacation. We have people that actually don't burn out their accrued vacation, some they give to care leave. And if it's really that important, all need to take off, then it's important to burn, burn eight hours of something, comp time, vacation, whatever. I'm not going to make a motion to take off or to close that day.
Sam, you got a safe face for yourself and make us.
I'm good. I think if, you know, employees want off, they can do vacation or personal days. And so I'm good with leaving everything as it stands right now.
Okay. So we don't need to take any action, I guess, then. It's just where we're at. Now, we had to request board and kicked it around, so. I'll be looking for a call with my stocking at the Christmas party.
Sorry, that's a game.
Concludes the agenda.
Hey, you still get it, so. Employee of the month gets off, right?
I think that concludes the agenda for today's meeting, other than going into closed session. So do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Present to section six, ten, oh, two, one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following personnel, that's due to section six, ten, point, oh, two, one, subsection three.
Second, roll call.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes. We are not taking the closed session and leave all the sessions.